Hi, welcome to the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, February 25th, 2016, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Can you hear me?
And Commissioner Reinhardt?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the consent calendar, please note that items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion, adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. So prior to the motion, I would like to ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. Currently, it is the approval of the draft action minutes for January 28th, 2016. Anyone? Okay. So can we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
I motion to adopt the consent calendar of January 28th, 2016, regular meeting. I'll second that.
Actually, I think Commissioner Anderson was absent, right?
No, I was-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the other afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So oral communications. There's a limit of 15 minutes total for anyone in the audience wanting to address the commission on any items that is not on the calendar. Does anyone want to do so? That's not on the calendar, that's not on the agenda right now? Sorry, did you want to come up and say, "Okay, alright." Alright, so no oral communications? In terms of written communication, I have sea level rise with Supervisor Dave Pine on March 1st, 7 to 8 PM. An email for our records stating that Dana Dilworth will be unable to come to tonight's meeting about- Oh, okay, so I guess not? So not applicable?
It's her last meeting.
Okay. February 24th, 2016, this is a letter to us from Samatail County Economic Development Association, and then a copy of the sustainability framework of Brisbane Baylands, which is going to be presented by Commissioner Reinhardt tonight. Anyone else have anything written that they'd like to share? Okay. So on to our presentation by Commissioner Reinhardt on the Bayland Sustainability Framework. Thank you.
Lights. Thank you. You all hear me? Okay. To keep this low. So, thank you. Tonight, I will be giving a, well, hopefully just a 10-minute overview of the sustainability framework, and mainly for two reasons. One is to introduce it to those that aren't familiar with it, which I hope everybody is, but if not, that's the first reason. And then, second, to reintroduce it to its purpose for reference and kind of conversation during our deliberations, which of course we're in right now. Ultimately, this is a framework or a guide to use for any and all development in the Brisbane Baylands, and it came from all of us, the citizens, and it did so because sustainability must be in the Brisbane Baylands. And in response to our concern, the city council established a sustainability committee. And this has been said several times, but although it's not a legally binding document, it's still have faith. It has a tremendous value as a way to discuss the important issues with anyone involved in development. And because it is what we call, you know, a living document, one of its strengths is that it can continue to evolve throughout the project and ensure it stays current with any technology and our needs, you know, as they change. You can see here it was accepted by the council in November of last year. So my hope, and I was part of the subcommittee, you know, is to help create a harmonious project, and I'm happy to say that productive conversations have already happened between the city and UPC because of it. The actual document can be found, if you haven't already seen the link, it's on our city website as well as on the Brisbane Bayland site. And if you're unable to download it or make a copy, please come down to City Hall and we'll help you out, get you a copy. Quickly, I just, I wanted to note that we did, we did our best to represent, you know, all the interests of the city by having various committee and commission members and levels of staff involved. You can see up on the screen a list of the people involved. And it was really valuable to work side by side with the Parks and Recs council members and the others. I'm really proud to have been a part of it, and we all worked very hard, as you can see that we began this in July of 2011. So that was a four-year effort. So thank you to all the people that contributed. If I missed anyone, I apologize. We also used a sustainability consultant to help us craft our framework, and, you know, having an expert in the mix is good for lots of reasons, but one of them is to help us integrate the program we chose, which I'll get into in a minute, and then as well as maintain a level of accountability for ourselves. And if you're interested in learning about the integral group, the website's listed there, integralgroup.com. Okay, so we got, okay, so now let's briefly walk through the program that we chose and how our framework was built. We narrowed down our choices to four sustainability programs with the goal of selecting, you know, the one that best matched our vision, of course, and we found that One Planet Living was that one. In a nutshell, One Planet Living uses science and metrics of ecological and carbon footprinting. So, and with their 10 principles, their idea is to kind of build this holistic framework to inspire action. And as I hope everybody knows, we as Americans use far too many resources, and we need to recondition ourselves to hopefully do something like this. Instead of five, you know, planet's resources, we use one or ideally less than one. And this also means allowing for regeneration and finding alternate uses for energy, like wind and solar. And it is, as you know, it's very difficult, and sadly in some cases, to repair the damage we've already done to the planet. But being able to design for a responsible way of living from square one is truly a great opportunity, and developing the Brisbane Baylands is definitely one of those. I'm sure we can all agree that this really is an incredible opportunity. One of the main reasons we found that One Planet Living was in alignment with our vision is that its program exceeds the highest standards in green building worldwide. It's not, it doesn't just meet standards and exceeds them. And in terms of sustainability, you know, it's my understanding, and hopefully yours, that that's what Brisbane is all about. Also part of the Green Building Ordinance Subcommittee, and we were, our big goal there was to go above and beyond the standards. This program was used, and we also chose it because it was used to build its first endorsed community in the US, Sonoma Mountain Village, which is interesting project, maybe not ideal, but it's a step in the right direction, and it's working. Since its beginning, the community developer, and I said both, have won several awards. In 2011, they earned the highest rating, platinum, and you've probably heard of the US Green Building Council. They have a program called LEED ND, which was also one we considered, and its focus is on neighborhood community development, and it won platinum, again, the highest level. It also won the GELA, GILA, GILA award, not sure how to pronounce it, but California's highest, most prestigious environmental honor for comprehensive land use planning, and that's what we're all doing here, land use. So that's a big win. And then for the last four years, well, from 2010 to 2014, the developer, the builders won several awards, three listed here, best place to work, healthiest employer, and fit-friendly worksite. So not easy to achieve these. So it's, something's working. And this is why we felt confident moving ahead with One Planet Living as our, as our base. So with all this in mind, we went through each principle and applied it to our vision for Brisbane. We didn't just copy and paste. We took their framework and then built it, customized it for Brisbane. And we used the background, you know, their background information to kind of orient and educate the reader, followed by key performance indicators. You'll see this in the document, I'm going to walk you through this, but we've got key performance indicators, how to measure our progress, and then implementation strategies and how to get it done. It's not, they are aspirational, but there's a lot of meat to it. And the intention was to actually invoke action. So for our framework, take a quick look, walk you through it. Each of the principles in the framework, there's 10, again, has these sections listed in them. So you can see them up there, and I'll walk you through them briefly. And I'm going to use one, I'm using our number eight principle, culture and heritage, as an example. And so for starters, when you get to one of the principles, you're going to see international targets, and this is, this is where, how the principle must qualify for One Planet Living on a global level. So every project that goes through One Planet Living on a global scale has to achieve this for the principle, and you can read through all of them, but they're very quick and easy to understand. Then through context, that's where we have examples and data from our community specifically, and in this case, there's information about the Aloney people, the civic values, the arts ordinance, and those sorts of things that are relevant to the principle, of course. In the summary section, we look at how to move our goals and methods forward into the planning process for the Baylands. Okay, and for instance, living culture, I listed some up here, Trail Network, the Roundhouse, our small-town values, and how to weave them in. The KPIs and the implementation, KPIs or key performance indicators are where we measure our impact and indicate our progress. So they're meant to be simple and easy to understand, not pages and pages of what we need to do. And this was another reason why we actually chose One Planet Living, because it's practice of continually holding the community accountable, not just a one-time checklist. And that's evident when you read through the key performance indicators. Our targets, and there's other targets that may be not in the key performance indicators that are in the implementation plan, and this, those are in there because this is the area where there are suggested actions and approaches necessary to achieve the sustainable goals and meet the key performance indicators, but they also can evolve along with policy and technology. So it has some flexibility. And then finally, the last part of each principle has a discussion section, and there's possible issues here that were sparked during our work on the particular principle, and ones that we thought were important enough to note. For instance, something could happen during, you know, the outcome of this that might change, where we might feel like changing zoning would be appropriate, and have to go back to the key performance indicators and adjust that. So that's where the flexibility comes in to play for us. And now, and so the second reason I mentioned, there are two, the second reason I wanted to present this tonight really was to remind the commissioners and that this framework can really help inform us on particular topics during our deliberations, and we as well as staff and Lloyd can continue to refer to it, which is very helpful for orientation for all of us, and we can also plug in anything that might be missing along the way. And summing up, vision for Brisbane, I didn't write Brisbane Baylands because to me, it's in the end, it's all one, it's all Brisbane, and I believe we can achieve this vision partially by using this framework. So, thank you. Oh, thanks.
So, thank you. Do we have any questions for Commissioner Reinhardt, from the commission? No? Okay. So, thank you very much.
You bet.
Will you move on to-
Actually, I do.
Okay.
So, how is the, how is the Sonoma Village doing?
Oh, it's doing well.
Has it been, how much has it been built out? The last I heard, it was just a marginal amount.
Yeah, it is, and I think, of course, their housing portion is a big piece of it, it's-
And that has started, they've started building that?
It's still in early stages. I don't know what's broken ground in that respect. I'm not familiar with where they are right at the minute.
And how much of the business, businesses have they built?
I'm not sure the percentage. I didn't pull the stats offline, but they're all on the website, both for commercial and residential. Their progress is on there.
Yeah, because last time I heard, there's not that much.
Yeah, it's slow-going, but, you know, they've, it's, that's part of the process too, is measuring it, you know, even if the steps are very small, in order to achieve the larger goal, because a lot of these, just like ours, is going to take 20-
That's true.
-plus years to develop, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have one question. Regarding the KPI, KPIs, who decides that? Who picks those, like you mentioned here, such as restoring the Roundhouse, social center, and indigenous cultural museum?
Right.
So, what a committee decision, or consultant, or what?
A combination, yes, of all. It was, so we would, we tried to represent, you know, all the interested parties and opinions, and for instance, you know, we had Chris on our board, or on the subcommittee, so he was, he had his input. But the consultant definitely helped guide us to that, and as a committee, we decided which ones we needed to put in there to achieve the goals.
Now, if somebody else wants to add to that, is there a process to go through that, or what?
Yeah.
He had some stuff to that.
Yes.
Who is the principal there that we, somebody can contact?
You can, well, we could probably, I would imagine sending it, at this point, it's been approved and sits with city council. So I would defer to staff as the best kind of channel to get the input, but-
Well, again, it is intended, as Commissioner Reinhardt pointed out, a living document. You know, certainly in the course of your deliberations, your process, the commission or any other party were to have suggestions or ideas that could go to the city, I assume the, at some point, the city council subcommittee would, would still guide this process, so you know, they don't, it's not regularly on their agenda at this particular moment, but certainly if there was more input, they'd be the body which would consider that and move it forward.
Okay, so the next question I have is, this particular one, the sustainability framework, was developed specifically for this project, or is it in general for the, any project in the city of Brisbane, any major project?
Any major project, but of course, the Baylands definitely inspired it, and where the interest came in, yeah.
So the public participated in coming up with this, all KPIs?
Well, they were, yes, indirectly, by whatever concerns the public communicated to city council, then that information was given to us early on as, when we started the subcommittee, and that was taken into consideration when we started developing or doing our research on the different programs.
So you mean to say that that had a complete public input to it when you come up with the final KPIs, as it stands right now?
Uh, it, well, it was available, yes, it was available online, but ultimately, the city council approved it, so there, I'm sure if there was any public feedback, I mean, they did have access to the document, so yes. But whether everything from the beginning, like before the subcommittee actually started, I'm not sure if everything was addressed specifically.
So if you had to change, you had to go through the city council, if you want to add something to it, or make changes to the KPIs?
Yes, ultimately, the document is adopted or accepted by the council, any changes would have to be accepted by the council as well.
Okay. Now, you picked those 10 principles, right?
Yes.
Are there any other that were discussed, or were not taken into account?
There were, well, there were, there's 10 that are, that, there are 10 principles that are from the One Planet Living, and we use that as our, as our starting point. We did modify the principles to fit Brisbane on a few cases. Most of them are pretty standard in any sustainability program, and you want addressed, like air quality or water, but we did, we did combine a few of them because we had some extra issues, and then we found the best principle and included it in that principle. So there's some that have a combination of two or more issues.
And are they measured qualitatively or quantitatively? You have, just have a qualitative analysis, just show that, or is there a definite numbers involved?
There, well, we did, we did our best to include numbers. There are actually numbers in the, in the KPIs, but they are, I would say, broad at best, because it's difficult to, and then things change, to have, you know, they might be out of date in 10 years or 15 years, but we did, we do have numbers in some of the KPIs.
So like, like for the air pollution?
Yeah, for air pollution, or water, yes, there are numbers in there.
So, as it relates to the water, what, what are the KPIs for that, when it relates to the-
Oh, I don't, I don't have the specifics. I can, we can pull it up on here and go through it, but wherever we could input numbers to give, you know, something specific as a goal, we did. And that, and that's one of the biggest challenges on any of these programs, is to, is to actually have numbers as a goal, because it is difficult to, you know, to have people commit to those.
So in order to have the, this particular sustainability program implemented, you have to have a water supply, right? Water is one of the-
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Many-
Yes, I think it's number six, or I was three, I can't remember which number, but yeah, it's definitely-
So what is the enforcement of that in case, is not, right now, it's not available, water is not available, but there is a projection that it may be available five years from now?
Right.
I think staff can clarify that.
Again, through the chair, when we go through different topics of discussion through the deliberation process, like water, or transportation, or energy, you know, the quantitative aspect of the sustainability framework will be part of your deliberation at that particular topic, so, you know, have the opportunity to understand what the, what the sustainability framework KPI or, or implementation measure was, and you'll be able to consider that as part of your implementation.
Yeah, the reason I was asking is I want to make, I want to understand that in order to meet the, these goals, you have to have a available water supply. Without that, you're not going to meet this. Right?
It does, actually, we do discuss the availability of water in, in that principle, particular principle, and the unknowns or, of source, of water sources. So we, that issue is addressed in that principle. It doesn't assume that we have a specific water source. We actually point out that we don't.
But you require to-
Oh, well, sure, I mean, to achieve, right, that, right, that principle.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, you bet, of course.
Any other questions? Okay. So on to old business. Baylands Planning Applications, Baylands Concept Plans, Brisbane Bayland Specific Plan, General Plan Amendment Case GP-01-06, and Related Final Environmental Impact Report. Universal Paragon Corporation is the applicant, owners of various APN various.
I'm going to turn the presentation over to Lloyd Zola.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
What we'll, we'll talk about tonight, just to move on with the deliberations, at your last meeting, or on the 28th of January, we talked about the basic principles that would apply to all land uses within the Baylands, and at tonight's meeting, we'll discuss non-residential land uses, what is the mix of uses that should be included in the Baylands, and then we'll talk specifically about site remediation, residential, because you can't really separate those two issues at your next meeting. Right now, within the Baylands, there are three different general plan designations. So we'll start with just kind of describing what your general plan says now about the land uses that could be within, in the Baylands. So you have the trade commercial category, the heavy commercial category, and then Marsh Lagoon Bayfront, which is really an open space, open area category. Trade commercial, this is taken directly out of the general plan, and the key is that right now, large part of the Baylands is designated trade commercial, which represents a mix of commercial uses, but includes warehouses, distribution facilities, offices, retail, restaurants, commercial recreation, personal services, light industrial, research and development, uses of similar character, and then potentially public semi-public facilities, education institutions, and then some more repair maintenance services that could be conditionally permitted. This is what your general plan says now are the appropriate land uses for the Baylands, in the Baylands subarea. Heavy commercial is the designation for the Beatty Subarea, which is basically the existing recology facility, and what your general plan says now is that designation provides for bulk sales, offices, meeting halls, vehicle storage, equipment maintenance, allows outdoor storage, but no material storage other than that associated with bulk sales, no processing of materials are permitted. That is the description of your existing recology site. So one of the things we'll talk about is, is this the description you want to see for that long term? Marsh Lagoon Bayfront has no real text description, but the Baylands, the lagoon is clear what the lagoon is, the bayfront clear what that is. These are open space categories, non-development categories, bayfront in the Beatty Subarea. So the question for this evening, and what we'll be asking you to talk about, is do those existing general plan land use categories, the non-residential categories, accurately describe what you would want to recommend to the city council? Keeping in mind that potential for residential development, we'll discuss that land use because that will take up and really deserves its own meeting and specific discussion. Tonight, we'll talk about these non-residential land uses and how, if at all- Tonight, we'll talk about these non-residential land uses and how, if at all, you would want to change those descriptions of permitted land uses. And we'll talk about them essentially land use by land use. As we go through tonight, as with all of your deliberation meetings until you get to the end, any decisions, any direction that you give this evening are subject to reconsideration, modification. This is just the initial discussion so that we can assist you by putting together several meetings worth of discussion into a potential recommendation, then you'll have exact, more detailed wording to work with. So the uses we'll talk about this evening are retail office, hotels and conference facilities, industrial uses, and arena and entertainment uses, ecology and their resource recovery facility, renewable energy generation, high-speed rail maintenance yard, commercial recreation, schools. This is essentially a list that between the existing general plan, between all of the various scenarios, the renewable energy scenario, this is kind of the list of, of non-renewable land uses or non-residential land uses that have been proposed in one or other of the scenarios, existing general plan, so on. And we'll talk through which of this list should move forward and, you know, and which maybe drop out. So retail, basic question for you tonight is, should retail be considered as part of the Baylands? What we'll talk about in later meetings is how that should be scaled because when you talk about retail, a small center such as you have in your downtown area is very different than a million square feet of, of commercial. So we'll talk about how that should be scaled, how big or how small it should be if you want retail as part of the Baylands, whether we should scale it to something that would be scaled to the needs of your community or something that would attract people to the community, to crassly say, come off the freeway, drop off your sales tax dollars and get back on the freeway and we'll take the sales tax dollars. But more to, should we look at something that serves the community and only the community or something that imports sales tax dollars? Basic considerations we look at retail is that in the sustainability framework, and we'll be talking about the sustainability framework as, just hits about every issue, retail restaurants, services for the surrounding community are included in what the framework calls a web of mutual efficiency, uses that will fit together to create efficient land use so people don't have to drive long distances or go long distances for the basic daily life. There was substantial support for retail uses in the community survey and under current law, sales tax is one of, is one of, if not the major generators of municipal income. It is net income to the city. We will also talk about office uses. Again, this very simple question is, should we consider office uses in Baylands development? In the future, we'll talk about how intense locations, building heights, because as you heard in a number of presentations, that is its own issue in terms of how much development goes where. But the question is, would offices be part of what you could picture for the future of the Baylands? The sustainability framework talks about jobs creation and in fact economics and as economics and ecology equity is an important part of its sustainability discussion and the jobs creation that could occur here could be a substantial factor, a key factor in the sustainability of the Baylands. You have the Bay Shore Caltrain Station, potentially then Bus Rapid Transit that would be at that station and jobs creation at that location, in and around that location can be a major transit orientation, major part of sustainability for the Baylands. And there was substantial community support for offices that was found in the community survey. Hotels and convention facilities are part of the, the various scenarios. Question for you tonight is, should those be considered as part of Baylands development? It was not, hotels not necessarily specifically mentioned in the existing general plan, but should we include that in that list? Again, we'll talk about in future meetings, intensity, location, building heights because hotels can be very different things from small boutique hotels to very large ones. And we'll talk about how they fit. But again, the sustainability framework recognizes hotels and hospitality industry potentially as part of that web of, of mutual efficiency. The community survey showed a split in support for hotels and convention facilities, 44% strongly or somewhat supporting, 53% opposing. But hotels and convention facilities are a major sales tax generator when you have them in a community because of sales taxes, transient occupancy taxes, and hotels, convention facilities tend to generate far more municipal revenue than they take up in, in services. Industrial uses. And the question for tonight is, should industrial use be considered as part of long-term future Baylands development? There is existing industrial in the, I always get my directions wrong, northeast Bay Shore, northwest, the northwest corner of the site, the industrial park up there. But should, do you see industrial in some form being a long-term use within the Baylands? Industrial warehouses, research and development, distribution facilities are included in your existing general plan. We'll talk in future meetings about intensity of, of industrial development locations. But remember that industrial use are included in the trade commercial category, land use category, they're allowed in the M1 zone. On the other hand, the C1 zone that covers a lot of the Bayland Subarea actually prohibits industrial. So you have a situation right now where your general plan includes industrial for the Bayland Subarea and zoning says no. So how do we, you see that playing out? In the community survey, there was a lot of support for research and development, but a lot of opposition to warehouses, manufacturing. And so one of the things as we get to industrial is you can say, these types of industrial research and development, whatever, might be appropriate, these other types might not. An arena and concert theater, that is included in the entertainment variant of the developer-sponsored plan. And so the question for you this evening is, would you like to see that in, in your description of appropriate uses for the Baylands? We can talk at, at subsequent meetings, if the answer is yes, about size and locations. And the things to consider, one, is there market support for an arena, is there market support for concert theater? Would that be something that you would consider if somebody could put one together? How would you see that, or do you see that working? There was opposition to entertainment venues that came up in the community survey, but the community survey did not identify specifically an arena or a concert theater. One of the other considerations, those also can be huge economic generators for a community. Ecology facility. Question for you is, you remember when I talked about the existing heavy commercial designation, how that describes use on that ecology site? Should the actual use, a description of solid waste management, zero waste, resource recovery be incorporated into the discussion of the Baylands as part of, of your recommendation? At subsequent deliberations, we'll talk specifically about the ecology expansion and it will, under any circumstances, whatever your recommendations are regarding that use, be part, have its, its separate day in court, separate from this process. The, the considerations to think about as we talk about ecology for tonight is not, we aren't focusing on, yes, it should expand, no, it won't, but we even want to describe it in our general plan because remember, your existing general plan does not describe that use. There, it was in relation to its expansion, there was a split in the community survey, 47% of, of the respondents saying somewhat supportive or very supportive, 49% opposed. And ecology resource facility is a major municipal income generator in your community today. We'll talk about renewable energy generation. And the basic question for you is, how should that be considered as part of Baylands development? What is the, what we want to say about it? We'll talk about specific locations, specific policies as we go through location of land uses. But renewable energy generation is a key concept in the sustainability framework in terms of zero, achieving zero carbon buildings, achieving zero carbon, energy, resource conservation, so on. There was substantial support in the community survey for that land use in some form of renewable energy generation as a specific land use category is really part of the developer-sponsored plan as part of renewable energy generation alternative. And the community proposed plan, those two scenarios presume that a similar amount will be done. The other thing to remember is that the existing general plan, having been written in, in 1994, renewable energy generation was not an issue then, so your existing general plan does not describe it as a land use. So just one of the things to, to keep in mind. You heard a lot of testimony early on about the high-speed rail maintenance yard, potential for location of that within the Baylands. And so the question for you tonight is, should that be considered as part of Baylands development? And in subsequent deliberations, we can talk about the specific location and size and potential of, of that rail yard. The concept being, and you'll see, you know, we're talking about specific location, size and intensity of these uses. The idea would be, once you get your list of uses, we can then identify, how do all these fit together, whatever the, the mix is? What is the best arrangement of those uses? Some considerations for, in relation to high-speed rail. One, the authority has not made a definitive decision regarding location, size, or operational characteristics. There's several concepts of larger yard, smaller yard. I think one thing that, that does seem clear is that the yard would be, operate with electrical locomotives rather than diesel and that makes a huge difference in terms of greenhouse gas and, and some other toxic emissions. But the environmental review process for that by the authority is just beginning. When I say policy framework, one of the options that you have is to actually include the rail yard as part of your policy discussion. So in that list of land uses, you could, for example, just note, this is one of the sites being considered by the rail authority. We understand and, and kind of talk through the circumstances under which that could be and this community would embrace that kind of use. Some of the testimony we've heard is, it would be great because we can mix that with renewable energy generation. You could actually just say that exactly that way in your general plan. A lot of discussion occurred earlier about, we need to have an alternative that includes a high-speed rail maintenance yard and you've heard from council that we don't need that as a sequel alternative, but you as a commission have the ability to recommend that consideration of high-speed rail maintenance yard as part of the use within the Baylands. Commercial recreation, question before you is, should that be considered as part of Baylands development? It's identified in the existing general plan. We'll talk about potential development intensity, specific uses and building heights and subsequent, but do we want to carry that kind of use forward? The, you, you heard the, a concept of golf-oriented development presented, that's one of a lot of different kinds of potential commercial recreation uses. It is, right now, identified in the general plan, you know, for the Bayland Subareas, one of the uses says commercial recreation. Do we want to essentially retain that identification? You do not need to say, we want this specific kind of commercial recreation use here. For tonight, to say, yes, we would entertain that, we would want to see that, or we would accept that as part of an overall mix will get us to where we need to go for.
What were the survey results for that, where there are, for the commercial recreation?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Survey results, it was?
There, there really wasn't discussion of, of a commercial recreation use. There was very strong support for recreational uses. There was, but there was not a specific question that got at commercial recreation. There was strong support for recreation, strong support for retail and services, but not a specific discussion that would, I could give you some numbers for that. Schools, I think is our, is our last issue tonight, last land use. Should schools be considered as, as part of Baylands development? The developer-sponsored plan shows some specific proposed location for schools, both charter high school as well as elementary school. The community prepared plan, the CPP scenario, show a charter high school site. And we can discuss that, if, if that is part of what you'd want to see as that list that a general plan would describe or you'd recommend, here's our list to city council. Specific locations for schools. Considerations, one of the questions you had asked early in, in the, earlier in the hearings was, are there any locations on the Baylands that meet the, the state standards for public school? And the answer is no. However, school districts do have the, the authority and to ask for, essentially it's a waiver, but based on mitigation measures to be implemented. So the way that I would look at, at the standards in state law is, those are not rules of thumb because there are a lot more concrete than that. Unless there is specific mitigation provided for a school, it would not normally be found appropriate in certain areas, 1,500 feet of, of some of the major pipelines coming in and out of Kinder Morgan, near the freeway and, and other things like that, near, has material sites and so on. But the other thing to keep in mind regarding in particular public schools is under state law, the school districts have the authority for their location. So whether you include it or don't include it on a land use map for the Baylands, whether you include it or don't include it on your list of uses, essentially, that's an issue of, of the school districts and, and the state superintendent. You can, as a community, weigh in on what you think is appropriate, but you do not have really the, the overall authority in, in terms of that.
I have a question, a question.
Mm-hmm.
So if we say that we do want public schools, then we have to designate the area for the public schools, is that correct?
No, no. You actually have for many of these land uses, you have the, the ability, if you consider, you know, the, some of the concept plans, you have the ability on some of the use and some of these concept plans, whatever concept plan you ultimately come up with to say, schools would be appropriate, we'll use schools as example, schools would be appropriate provided that mitigation can be provided and the approval of the state superintendent and all those things without identifying a specific location for it. You could include.
And, and so it could be, or, you know, or, or it could just drop off the?
Exactly. You could identify, for example, you have areas that, that may say, if you decide to do it this way, commercial, that could be allowed for not only retail office, but would also include commercial recreation. So you have a lot of ways of going. In, in many communities in their general plans, there are not specific designations for future schools. In fact, most don't. Unless a school district already owns a site, typically, they don't like putting, school district will buy that property at that location for a number of reasons. So you are not required to show a site for a school, but you could still say, schools would or would not be appropriate. As you could with, with other uses such as, you know, the high-speed rail maintenance yard, that would be an appropriate use. We understand that it's being looked at by the state. We would not just accept it, but embrace it under these circumstances, if they provided this mitigation, did these things for our community, without identifying, it will go here and trying to outguess how many acres they need. So those will be options as we go back through these uses that, that can help walk you through.
Be helpful.
Yeah. So the idea is for tonight and, and at your next meeting, we'll decide, if you remember those, those general plan categories, how would, how would we revise that list of uses that would be allowable and create essentially a single list of uses that would apply within the Baylands? And then we can move on, depending on what that is, what the best arrangement is because the various scenarios have some very different arrangements. Any, if there's no more questions, we'll be, turn it back to, to you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do this kind of like.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Where would the? Where would the roundhouse be located in here?
Okay. The roundhouse, we've already identified as one of the key principles. The roundhouse will be restored.
Okay.
The EIR mitigation measures call for both stabilizing it immediately, restoring it, and now the question that we talked about at your last meeting was, what should the use be?
Right. That's what I was wondering.
Right. And what you talked about there was reintroducing some kind of rail-related use, and so you've already kind of talked about that land use, and-
Okay.
We'll also talk about what other uses, and then we'll start, when we get to arrangement of land uses, then we can start talking about what that really means in terms of choices for that roundhouse area, and if rail, if there is some kind of rail use, how does that fit with surrounding uses?
Okay. I know we had already discussed it, but I was wondering if we should take any of those and bring them into this? No.
No, yeah. You've already made that, so I'm not taking, I won't take you back through things you've already decided, and that's why I had also said, and you'll see in attachment one, I'll try through all these meetings to keep a running list of the direction that we have. These are not the official minutes, these are just my notes on the way I'm perceiving what you said, and so we can have something that comes out each time, that we can keep track of where we are.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I had a question. So apparently, processing of materials is not currently permitted, but I'm wondering, is recology doing that right now, or what is their operations called if it's not called "processing materials"?
I think the technical term, it's a grandfathered use.
Okay.
Yeah. And the issue that I'm identifying here is that your existing general plan, recology doesn't fit under this description. And so we could talk about, you know, just, when we get to the recology part, yes, we should put something in there that talks about zero waste, solid waste management, and actually, then you would have the opportunity, as we get to policies in the, that would apply, and mitigation measures, that you could start talking about operating requirements even for the existing facility in your general plan, because they're not there now.
Currently, it's not permitted, right?
It's, the best way I would describe it is, it is there as a grandfathered use, after all this time being there, you can't say, "No, it's not permitted, it's never been permitted," and, yeah. And so this is kind of, there will be things that, as we go through, we're kind of, just reconciling that grandfathered use with the description of the general plan.
The question will be that, the expansion of that facility, then the new extension will come under the grandfather clause or not?
No.
So that's, so that means they cannot extend?
Well, you've got two different, the way we'll go through this, you've got two different, two different decisions. One would be, do we describe resource recovery, zero waste, however we eventually describe it, in the general plan? So that would be one. Is that a use that ought to be permitted within the Baylands?
Well, maybe we could start with that one. What do you think?
And the second question is, where? So as you start crafting, and this is moving from the text, that's the list of land uses, the description of land uses, to a concept plan map, do you show the existing facility? Do you show an expansion? And understand, whatever you decide as part of Baylands development, recology comes back as a separate EIR program, separate land use, separate EIR program. So if you decide, yes, we would enter, and this is getting ahead a little bit, but if you decide and we start talking about location, yes, we should show its expansion, that does not commit you to approve an expansion later. If you say, "No, we should not show it now," that does not preclude you from approving it when it comes back to you later. And when we get to the mapping part, I'll help you through that dilemma.
That will be the key decision for that particular-
That, that is a key decision. The first decision is, should we even describe the use in our general plan?
Have they made a formal request to the city, and does that include the size they want, or is it just speculative at this point?
Yes, they've made an application to the city. The project description is being finalized as the basis for the standalone review process at this point. And actually, I can show that the area is, yeah. I'll show you, one of the things you would ask, now I'll go back to the end.
I was gonna say, where's our maps?
Okay. I've got to flip to the end.
Okay.
And unfortunately, all I can do is one by one. Okay. This is the recology variant, so if you look at the location of, in the northeast corner of the site, the gray area there is the expanded recology. So that is the area that recology is ultimately requesting their expansion.
Could you flip to the DSP for a minute?
Yep. Here we are. Oh, I went past.
That's the red area there next to recology?
Okay. The, okay, recology on this one is the existing facility, essentially the Beatty subarea, that is the crosshatch at the northeast. And then, in between the existing recology facility and Geneva are various commercial land uses that are part of the developer-sponsored plan, part of this specific plan. One of the major differences that we'll get to when we talk about concept plans is the alignment of Geneva.
So Geneva's more southerly in the recology expansion, so it's not just a small red area-
Exactly. Yeah. And so, we have these, yeah, we'll go there, you can see.
I see.
It's much farther south.
Makes more sense.
So we'll get to the discussion of the mapping. We do have this map also. This shows the various subareas. What you'll see at the north, in kind of outline, is the Beatty subarea, that's essentially recology. You will see at the curve on, I think that's the curve on Bay Shore, the northeast area, Bay Shore, which is the industrial area, and the balance of the Baylands is the lagoon. Is, the balance of the Baylands is the Bayland subarea, including the lagoon.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll take you back to-
You could flip to the beginning.
Does anybody want to go in order here, or can we just take various ones and talk about them first?
Any order's fine with me.
Huh?
Any order's fine with me.
I don't have a preference.
Well, I was thinking we could look at recology, high-speed maintenance yard, and renewable energy generation, and talk about those three, and then start looking at some of the other things, if that's all right with anyone else.
Good idea there.
You know, to start with the ones that, I'd like to start with recology, and I'd like to see an expansion. I, I think, I want to see the Baylands be useful, and I think that one of the things that's useful about the Baylands is recology. It started out as some other name, but it wasn't, you know, it was a dump site, and it has stayed a dump site, basically, or, you know, and I'd like to see it turned into a better dump site, where we incorporate using recology and expanding it so that more and more of the materials that can come in can be processed there on-site. And so that's my feeling about recology. I'd like to see the expansion. I don't know how anyone else feels, but I, I feel good about the idea of expanding it. I think it's necessary, there's not really another place for the expansion, if, and it fits the criteria for this, because we're processing everything on-site as much as possible.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I certainly agree with the direction or goals of on-site. How's that? I'm gonna have to squish myself into the corner here. So I certainly agree with the goals of the expansion. It would be good to have on-site processing, but the challenges are, you know, there've been a lot of complaints from people in the area that they're not really meeting their expected performance criteria in terms of, you know, odors and being not a nuisance to the neighbors.
And that's part of the processor, of the new system, is that they wanted to bring the vehicles in, you know, I've looked at some of the proposal, and bring it in-house, into the buildings, and process it that way, and not have it so out in the open.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it would just be better for the neighbors, period. I mean, we, you know, we don't have the proposal to look at, but actually, I've looked at it.
Yeah. I think without the proposal to look at it, it's very difficult to assess the impact, actual impact on the community itself, as well as the biggest concern I will have is the transportation part of it, how many truck routes they will have, bringing all the materials from where, and also the energy demand, how they're gonna meet that, because whatever the process they're gonna have require a lot of energy to do that. And I haven't seen any detailed plans to show that. And also, I think it will have the impact on the community itself. I think that should be explored through some kind of a survey or something, as to what people like to see there, because anytime you talk about the hazardous material processing, there are some, people always get concerned about that. So at this point, you know, I know we had to come up with some kind of a recommendation, but I think it's too early for me to say that we go ahead with that expansion part of it. But I'm open to that, if I get some more information about that.
I think that, at this point, according to the reports that we've been receiving, one of the things we should keep in mind is that a separate, specific plan and site-specific EIR would be later prepared when we talk more about modernization and expansion. So I think generally, today, we're supposed to decide whether expansion would be an option or not. So I don't, I mean, it's good to keep these things in mind, but I don't think we have to determine it today.
Was there any survey taken by the, to show that, how the community feels about the expansion?
Forty-seven, forty-nine.
Forty-seven, forty-nine.
Forty-seven, forty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that question revolved, was aimed at the expansion. So the question before you today is not necessarily, should it or should it not expand? We'll get to ways of addressing that question. We talked about a concept plan map, but the simpler question, it sounds like you're generally in agreement, is that the description of the Baylands that sits in the general plan should include a description of the resource recovery, zero-waste use, that's at least the one that's there today. And then I would add to that, that it should be operated with some of the concerns that you have in terms of traffic in and out, its compatibility with the adjacent neighborhood, and the management of waste in a way that's compatible with the surrounding community.
That sounds about right.
Well- well put. I think that's what concerns.
Another big issue is that the location of the expansion is kind of a nexus point of the whole project. It's right next to the freeway on-ramp, it's right next to the transit center, you know, there's a lot of things that are potentially competing to go right in that place. But, you know, if we recommend for an expansion, there's not really any place else that it could reasonably go.
Yeah. We have to think about how it's gonna fit in with the rest of the structures around there.
So what we're saying is that we are not going to, what are we saying? I'd like to know what we're saying.
What my notes say, now, is that, that description of uses within the, within the Baylands would include resource recovery, zero-waste, zero-waste management, that could be, that would be operated in a way that's compatible with the surrounding community, that addresses air quality, safety issues, and we can pick up some of the other mitigation measures coming out of the EIR, some of the concerns you've heard about trash blowing around, noise, and on-site operations. We'll get to, when we talk about the land, so, right now, we're just talking about describing the use in the general plan because it's not there now. Then when we talk about a concept plan map, that's where the question of, do we show, as in the DSP scenarios, just the existing footprint, or do we show something different?
Yeah, I think I could agree to that, if, I think probably all of us would, if we're-
Great.
It seems to me, from what's been-
You might want to lift it up a little bit.
How's that? I think I, do I have to buy my own mic? It seems, from what I've heard-
That works.
From what I've heard, that we seem to be largely in agreement of the concept of recology and its existing uses, and if we're deferring the size and whether or not there's going to be an expansion, then I think that's sufficient for now. We need to vote on each thing as we go through it, or?
No, I think we're just taking notes, right?
That basic direction is good enough for now. I think it's probably, because these are just interim, it'll be, in some ways, better if you're not voting each time around.
Yeah. So Carolyn, you said number two was what?
Oh. The idea of renewable energy and also the high-speed rail maintenance yard. It's been proposed by many people who are speaking that perhaps the two could work together.
Okay. So do you, let's, let's work with the renewable energy generation?
Renewable energy generation. My question is, now, the couple people have proposed a certain number of acres they would like. I don't think, I would like to see them have that much, but also open the possibility of maybe the San Mateo County and Brisbane and this area might need more of the acreage for the solar farm, wind farm.
Well, we're not talking about size tonight, but if you calculate the amount of energy that just San Francisco uses, you could put nothing but energy generation on the Baylands and still have a market. So, you know, while we do have to talk about trade-offs on size, I don't think that there's an amount of renewable energy that's like too much energy.
Right. So I think we could say that we should leave it open-ended?
Well, I think we should strongly support as much renewable energy as the project will sustain, and I think a lot of the potential uses, like high-speed rail, and perhaps even recology expansion, might be combined with an extension of the energy generation, you know, all of those things are on the east side of the rails.
Correct.
I think the Commissioner Parker's question was that we should expand the energy generation to just specify that San Mateo County has the initiative to have the, you know, the energy, renewable energy program for not only Brisbane, but the entire San Mateo County. So we can, in our recommendation, say that that should follow the San Mateo County renewable energy initiative.
I mean, certainly, we can't look at a more ideal location, you know, just as recology- You know, just as recology, I mean, it's there, it has a traditional area. The PG&E substation is across the street, basically. You know, it, the location's ideal, and, you know, and it meets the principles of one planet living. So I don't know how we want to put it, but that's what I'm feeling.
Well, then, what, what we can say is that we all agree that that will be the strong element of the, the development, which will be renewable energy, and we wholly support that, to be a part of this, no matter what the ultimate decision will be, but the renewable energy component should always be there.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
So that would be one of our land use, on the list of our land use preferences, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't know what we would want to say about the high-speed rail maintenance yard, but it's potentially possible that we could welcome it, especially if they help us set up a good renewable energy plant.
I don't think it's a question of welcoming, they can take the land, you know.
It may be unstoppable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be unstoppable, but I, I mean, it should at least be open to the idea that we could work with them.
The thing is that that discussion was started at some point, and I think about last week or week ago, I heard the, on the news, that they put this as a priority now, that particular element. And also.
Could you, could you repeat or clarify what you just said? Was there an additional statement from HSR?
Yes, there was, on CBS News, there was a statement a couple of days ago, I think. And basically, they're saying that they're already working with the Caltrains to have the electrification project. That's already started, and they have the money to do that. And also, they have the money to do, to do the project from San, I think it was from San Jose to, was it more Stockton?
I don't remember, not Stockton.
Not, it was not a Stockton, San Luis Obispo or somewhere. So that's their top priority, and they already decided they are going to do that, both those two projects, and one is already underway. The electrical, electrification project is already going.
Right, but they haven't made another statement about the location of the.
The location is, was, a statement was not made, but they have one record indicating that. And logically speaking, from, from the point of view of the design itself, it looks like the Brisbane will be the choice place, because it's very close to the San Francisco, but.
Well, we don't know, but.
But.
It might be, it seems very likely.
They have mentioned that several times, that that's, I mean, they have not final, made a final decision on that.
But I, I think we shouldn't wander around with our head in the sand either.
Yeah.
No, we're not.
And so, you know, I don't know, so the question would be whether, how to put it in such a way that we can get what we, help that we need if this comes through.
What you're trying to say is the high-speed rail maintenance yard, we also recommend that they should provide means to generate the renewable energy.
Or, or something, you know, to stake over, and, you know, they, they should in some way work with the city. So I think if we are proactive rather than reactive, it might be better. I don't know what the state.
So we can just end the topic to say high-speed rail maintenance with renewable energy generation.
Yeah, the way, the way that other communities have approached other uses where outside public agency, state agency is looking at taking a large area and putting a major land use in that changes things, is, and based on what you've said, is we could describe the high-speed rail maintenance yard as a potential use within the Baylands, describe as part of that, recognizing that, that potential, there are issues essentially that we would, as a community, expect the authority to take care of, such as providing for renewable energy generation within that area, and then just anticipating responding to a notice of preparation. Some of the issues such as, that it came up in the Central Valley, noise needs to be addressed, and, you know, the operational characteristics, the safety of, of areas, access in and out of the Bayland, so it's not blocking streets, and just some of the basic things that we would put in a, in a notice of preparation as a community asks the authority to address in their EIR. But that essentially would be part of your policy. This is what we need in return for you putting it here.
Yeah, then I will come back to my questions that I raised earlier, that this should have been alternate, that should have been addressed, and it should be one of the alternatives, just like developers, community, and high-speed maintenance yard.
I think legal counsel has mentioned many different times here that the city's not in a position to plan for a state facility, to environmentally review a state facility that we do not have the operational control over.
You took it wrong. I'm not saying that we are taking over the operation of that. We are looking at the potential use, land use at that point, just like we are looking at the potential land use for the solar energy and all that. So it's the same thing, that the high, high-speed maintenance yard is a potential use. We are not designing, or we are not preparing the specific EIR. What all we are saying is that there is a possibility of that particular use, and that should be considered as one of the alternative.
Well. And essentially, based on, on the discussion you've had, that's exactly what I, I'm understanding, you would say is, or could say as part of your recommendation, that's different than saying we should have gone back and done an alternative that included it. You will at the end of this process be asked to look at, essentially, this is what we're recommending as the land uses within the Baylands, this is what the EIR says, do they match up? And so the issue was, you can include that discussion of high-speed rail now, you can include recognizing the potential for that, you can identify it in your discussion of the Baylands as a use for the Baylands, without having to say, "G R E I R is inadequate because we didn't do it back then."
Well, the thing is, if you look at it, you know, the, if you put the high-speed rail there, the entire analysis will be different. The EIR impact will be quite different than what you have now. It'd be not replacing any, you know, certain facility there, whereas it's, it has, it will have a major impact on your EIR results. So we cannot just say that we didn't do, we just recommending that because we didn't do the EIR for that.
Yeah, no one's disputing that. The, the issue is there was no, there's no site identified, there's no facility to have plugged into any environmental review the city did. That's, that's all we're saying is.
So is the community design, and so is the DSI, you know, we don't have the specific sites for where the industrial buildings will go and all that. That's why we call that a concept plan. We don't call that a specific plan. So the concept EIR should have been done for that particular alternate also. That's my position, but you may disagree with that. But I think it's along the same line, and I think that, that particular alternate has a lot more we know than what we know about the others in terms of the concept level. We don't know where the buildings will go, industrial buildings and all of that. We are looking at it right now for the, for the community plan. So it's, it's, I think it's much more advanced than the consumer, a community plan, at least they come and say that this is the particular area we're looking at it. So, and you may disagree with that, with me, but I think that should have been done in the EIR.
It's, yeah, and it's not an issue I'm either agreeing or disagreeing with. It, it's an issue that we'll discuss when we get a recommendation and deal with the EIR. And essentially, the, the difference between a high-speed rail site and the DSP scenario or the, or the CPP scenarios is, we know in each of those scenarios how many square feet of building there will be, and the DSP scenario, how many residential units are being proposed, so you can actually quantify use. In the High-Speed Rail Authority, they talked at one time about a hundred-acre site. The city then received another letter saying, "We're looking at changing it, we're looking at, because of operational characteristics, we may need only half the rolling stock we needed before in the way that it blends with Caltrain, so we may need a much smaller site." Those are the issues we can deal with when we get to the EIR. I think as, as a group, if I can get this right, that the discussion of the Baylands land use should describe the potential for the high-speed rail use, recognize that it is being considered, recognize that there are a series of issues that, as the High-Speed Rail Authority looks at its operational characteristics, its own mitigation measures that need to be addressed, and then as we put a package together, get to the EIR part, you know, you'll need to make a decision as a commission whether the EIR adequately addresses the, the final recommendation.
What concerns me, and this is why I'm bringing it up, is if high-speed rail comes in and wants a certain area of land, I want to make certain that we get something from it, that we're not just, you know, we're proactive and working with them to get something. You know, if we're gonna, if, if one idea that was brought up was that the Krebel group actually did go talk to them and talk to them about putting the solar farm on top of the high-speed rail, I don't want to turn around and see that they're going to use all the solar for their own use. You know, I, I want somehow to be in some kind of a relationship with them, so I don't know the best way to put it so that, you know, we get what we need, but, you know, I, I just don't want to see the city of Brisbane taken advantage of. And so in the way that we can craft this that would work for our advantage, I'd like to see it. And, and that is why I think maybe we should somehow or another put it in the discussion.
And, and, yeah, I'm, I'm understanding that, so it would be both the discussion of, this is what the state is considering, and essentially, and this is what we need in return if you're going to put it here. Some of the community compatibility issues, noise, in, in the Central Valley EIR, they found significant unavoidable noise impacts for a quarter-mile away from, quarter, quarter-mile, a little bit more than a quarter-mile away from, from the maintenance yard, as you've got cars banging together and so on. And the way noise carries it.
There's an abrecology there.
Yeah, so we can identify things that you, as a community, would, would want and need in, in return. This is not the phrase I would use in a recommendation, but essentially, what do we get in return? How does, how does this become a community benefit? Or as one city in the Central Valley said in relation to the, the yard, so what's in it for us if we agree?
Right. I mean, you know.
They were, they were more blunt than you'd ever put in a, in a recommendation with city council.
That's what I want to say.
But I think we, we can work that into, into a discussion. I've seen cities do that a number of times in relation to large public works, facilities being proposed by outside agencies in or adjacent to a community.
I mean, the only discussion I've heard is they would want to put it next to recology, but.
I think we can add the strange terms in there. I mean, this or that, you know, the strange. So we can craft that as we, we get there.
And I know we've only talked about east of the rail yard as the, east of the rail line is the place for HSR, but I think that should be in the statement as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
And I do have to say that I was at the senior center at a class, and I heard it could have been next door, the Caltrains coming by, as clear as day. You know, I could have walked across the street and gotten on Caltrains. It was amazing. This city is this, an arena for noise. You know, so we do have to, you know, you know, to think that they would come in and.
I think electrification will address some of the concerns with the.
Yeah, but still they would.
Because it would be a lot less noisy than the diesel engines, so.
It would be less, yeah, what, what it showed there in, in that EIR, where they looked at both diesel and electric, there was less noise, because the diesel engines are, are a lot noisier. But the big differences showed up in air quality, toxic air emissions, and just all the, the downsides of diesel burning.
I couldn't believe it.
Electrification would be a far healthier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Use. What use would you like to go to next?
Okay. I've had mine.
So Carolyn's had her top three. Anybody else? How about we keep the, the idea flowing, so whatever's next, most related to those three issues.
I'd like to take a couple of minutes' break.
I, I would.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
It's like a good idea.
So five-minute break?
Yeah.